Good afternoon, everybody. What is this, three, four days in a row, what we've met in the, regarding this transportation issue? But it, it is good to report, it seems like every day, while the challenge continues to represent itself to the district and its staff, and most importantly, the parents and community, the administration continues to work through the problem as best it can. And we are here today, September the 8th, 2001, to get yet another update from our superintendent and our team, again, who are working the problem diligently and doing their best effort to get information to parents who need this information as soon as possible. So, without further ado, Superintendent Meyer Small, what do you have for us today?
Good afternoon, President White, Vice President Elliott, commissioners, and those who are watching. I do have an update relative to our transportation crisis in the Rochester City School District. I'm just waiting for co-hosts to be established, and then we can, and then we can project the PowerPoint presentation. Our current transportation status of today, and I promised the board and the viewers that we would provide those updates. So we have one resignation as of 12:45 PM today, and that is Monroe Transportation. And then first student, we have two resignations. Our Transportation Department is working, remember, this constantly is evolving. So we are working to verify all of the students that may be impacted as a result of this, as well as special education students and general education students. And we will be contacting those families directly. We have contacted RTS to discuss the possibility of transporting additional secondary students. So we are working on that to see if we can free up additional yellow buses to assist with the routes that currently are not covered. I would like to update also that we have worked with charter schools to develop options for rerouting and tiers of school and start/end times. I have to share that it was an extremely collaborative and productive meeting. Charter families who submitted transportation requests after April 1st will not receive transportation. And, and we discussed that today with the charter schools. As far as the number of students who are not covered by school, you can see that they're listed. So as of right now, we have 317 students who do not have transportation total in the district. And you can see that the totals students who are impacted are listed. They include RISE 106, Enrico Fermi School 17, World of Inquiry, Leadership Academy for Young Men, Edison, out of district, Roberto Clemente School 8, School 12, School 23, School 29, School 35, School 39, School 46, and School 52. So as you can see, remember, the total is 317 students. So while we have a reduction in the number of drivers, the reduction in routes, our team has been working very closely with the Transportation Department to ensure that we kept that disruption of coverage to an extreme minimum. So when you think about the fact that the Rochester City School District transports over 31,000 students to have 317 as of right now, what time is it, a little after 1 o'clock? That's, that's really not a bad situation. That does not take away from the fact that these 317 scholars do not have transportation. So that is our update, but it will continue to evolve. As one, we are, we receive notification of drivers retiring or resigning, and/or as we continue to consolidate routes, as well as if RTS is able to pick up additional routes. I see your hand, Commissioner Powell, but if you just allow me to go through the presentation, and then I'll take questions, happy to take questions, in order. So given that these 317 scholars don't have transportation, we also know that we needed to create what we're calling a Transportation Interruption Learning Plan, because we still are required to provide learning to these, to these students. So one of those 317, we don't know through varied partnerships and collaborations that we have, they may have transportation either through a family member, something else that they've obtained, or with a generous donation from Conkey Cruisers, we may have additional supports in that regard. But as far as our interruption learning plan, students who are not able to arrange their own transportation will log into Google Classroom or CSO and follow their schedules via remote learning. Day one, because again, we have to give our teachers an opportunity to get themselves acclimated and ready to teach students simultaneously. Students will log on and receive asynchronous assignments for the day. And then day two, and until we are able to secure the transportation, students will log on and follow their schedules via remote learning with their teachers until transportation can be resolved. So next steps, certainly, we are ensuring that we continue to have not only robo-call and website, but direct communication with families and with our staff to keep them updated relative to our progress. We'll work to finalize the RTS contract. But again, the five schools that I previously shared with you that did not have transportation will have transportation, and that is Edison, Northeast, Northwest, Leadership for Young Men, and Rochester Early College. We will continue to recruit drivers to fill the vacated slots. We will continue to review how to consolidate routes to determine efficiencies. And we will implement the Community Involvement Plan, which again, our Office of Strategic Partnerships has been, has been taking the lead on that in collaboration and in concert with principals. But we are working to very quickly remedy the, the fact that we don't have routes to cover all of our scholars. And we are moving expeditiously to make sure that we have students here on their first day. The majority of our students do have transportation. We continue to be incredibly excited. And again, I want to thank the Board of Education for giving us an additional day to try and work some additional structures and systems in place to cover the routes. But we do have a district covered of about 22,000 students who do have transportation. I would like to take this time to just remind families that this is the first day, and typically, as they're running through and moving from area to area or home to home, that, that there's a time that you will know that the bus comes to you, but it could be a little bit later, that, you know, please be patient with us, as our transportation has really made significant, significant progress and made some Herculean moves. So that is my update. We do, I do have a resolution that I would like to ask for consideration. But I'm sure that commissioners do have questions, and I will entertain those at this time.
I see that Commissioner Powell has a question.
Thank you. My question was on that slide, the Transportation Update slide, you said 36 district students?
You, you came in and out, Commissioner Powell, I didn't hear.
I'm sorry. Your Transportation Update slide indicates that there are 36 out-of-district students without transportation? Clearly, these are cases where have disproportionate impact on our problem, because they're, they could potentially be coming from anywhere in the county. But can you explain to me, are these, is this urban suburban? Are these out, English language learners coming in from the suburbs? Are these special needs kids that are coming in from outside of the district? Or that we're sending to BOCs? Or what is this? What makes that 36?
Again, we're, we're continuing to determine the exact location, but we do know that some of those students are students with disabilities.
That we're, that we're sending to schools, special schools, or?
Correct.
You all set, Commissioner Powell?
Yeah, all right.
We're now, Commissioner LeBron?
Yeah, I just have a few questions. Leadership and Edison are on the transportation, but then you said that they did have transportation. So just want some clarification on the 30 students at Leadership, the 46 at Edison. And then also, you mentioned the schools, which the majority do seem to be elementary schools. And I do want to understand the grades that these kids are all in. And if we have a breakdown of that, how many are in kindergarten, how many are in first grade, how many are in second? And then in addition, just some clarification on the no transportation for new families entering the district statement. And then finally, you made a statement that the students would learn remotely until transportation can be resolved. You can clarify that as well.
Commissioner LeBron, I didn't get a chance to write down all of them. Would you mind just going back one by one, and I will answer? I'm sorry.
It's okay. On the first slide that you presented with the schools and the number of students
Yes.
who do not have transportation. Leadership, there's 30 students, Edison had 46 students mentioned without transportation. But then you also mentioned that Leadership and Edison would have transportation. So you can expand on that, and what you mean by that? These are two high schools on that PowerPoint. The rest of the schools may be excluding the out-of, out-of-county or out-of-district transportation. But the grades of these students, if we can find out how many are in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade, and so forth. Then you also mentioned that there are no transportation available for any new families that are entering the district. You can expand on that, if that's going to be permanent? There is an answer as to when that will end? And then from the statement that you made in reference to the slide with students having to log into Google Classroom, but also just kind of trying to get clarification on what that means for students that don't have transportation? If they have the remote option until transportation is resolved, if you could just clarify that? Did you capture those?
Sorry. So going back to Leadership and Edison, those are students who are in specialized programs at that school.
But they don't have, but we're legally required to provide transportation for those students?
We are, and so we are quickly working to remedy, so that's why the collapsing, if we, Commissioner LeBron, tried to collapse, we would have impacted in potentially entire schools. So our directors and associate directors will be working with those families and those students to, again, try to quickly cover the educational needs. And they are in the prioritized, excuse me, list of getting them back to have transportation, but you are correct.
So we will be providing any transportation for the students who are special ed in these two schools with IPs?
This, 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 the num, these numbers, yes, for these two particular programs.
And then just the rest of the questions, because then I have one last question, but I'll wait till the second round.
Okay, so the grades, we, what we have, we do have the lists. We were working to ensure that we understand the schools, but we can get the grade levels, and we can send that off to all commissioners, but I don't have that right now, but can get that very shortly for you. And then the no transportation, that was for students, if they requested transportation and they were in charter schools after April 1st, they would not be guaranteed transportation. So that's what that referred to. And then you had, your last question was about Google Classroom?
My last question was, in the slide that you had those two points, was you said students can access, can do remote until transportation can be resolved. So if you can just clarify what that means? So if they don't have transportation, these students can then just remain home and remotely? And this is including all of the students that you mentioned on that slide?
That is correct. And the principals are working, I'm sorry, the chiefs are working with the principals to make sure that that is a cohesive plan so that scholars can quickly get access and get into that Google or CSO classroom. And just also remember that this plan, the Transportation Interruption Learning Plan, we are, we are holding on and we are hoping that additional drivers will not resign, but we know that that's a very, very much so, a reality. That it's very much so a reality, and so this is why we're calling it a Transportation Interruption Plan. When we learn of a driver or drivers or routes that are no longer covered, this would be our plan to ensure that students are still connected and, and involved in school and learning.
Almost there, thank you. I have one more question, President White, but I will wait till the second round.
All right, thank you. Next, Commissioner on the list is Vice President Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. President. So let me just be clear, we're saying that as of today, we have 317 students without transportation. But that does not take into account those students who previously that we provided transportation for, that were not provided transportation for. As an example, those who are ineligible based on the 1.5 eligibility law. And then there are also some walkers. How many are, what's the total of those students, Madam Superintendent?
So what was given to me is that that was all of the students. I will go back, I'll have my team there listening, we'll go back and check and make sure before we get off. But my understanding, oh, there are 584 walkers, I'm sorry, that's what you were asking? There are 580.
Yeah, 584 walkers, but what about, are those students also the ones who are included in that, that do not qualify based on the 1.5 eligibility?
Yes.
So that's the total, so we're talking about 584 walkers?
Yes.
And then we're talking about 317 that do, we do, we still need to get transportation for? Okay, so, but, but we've got around 31,000 students that do have
We provide transportation for.
Transportation for, okay.
No.
Is that right?
Yeah, we, we are responsible for transportation. Let's take it from who we don't. We have 584 walkers, we have 317 as of about 12:45 today, who don't have transportation. We have about 22,000 Rochester City School District students who do have transportation. And then another 7,000 to 8,000 of charter, non-public, et cetera, that received, right.
Okay, so let me, let me, let me put this on the table. You talked about your Transportation Interruption Learning Plan.
Yeah.
That's, is that solely for the 317 students?
Yeah.
So, so I'm, I'm, I'm thinking, Madam Superintendent, at some, at some point, we may have to look at that kind of a, a, a learning plan for those 584 that we, we don't have, that are no longer allowed to be on the, on the bus. And I'm talking about the ones, particularly that 1.5, that those students and families who we had approved for transportation, but they were ineligible based on the 1.5 learning plan. So Madam Superintendent, I'm interested in if we, if they can't get to school, that we look at having some kind of interruption learning plan for them? I know you want them in school, but, you know, my experience shows that those students are not always there if they don't have the transportation. So I'm going to ask that we look at some alternative, some transportation interruption learning plan for those students as well. And so I don't need you to really give me any kind of answer right now, but know that I'm going to be advocating for that, because if those students can't get to school, we need to look at how can we educate them? And there are always some very valid reasons as to why, you know, we had them on the bus, even though they were ineligible, because we want to make sure that they were in school, we want to make sure that they were safe. So I would just leave that and pose that right now, and have some further discussion at another time about it, Dr. Myers Small.
Understood, Vice President Elliott. Don't forget also, though, that that's why we have our community involvement plan, where there, we may be able to pick some of those students up as well through walking school buses or, or safe passage, et cetera. So those, those, those responses or those systems are currently in process, in progress to move forward. But I, I, I hear what your concern is.
So, so where does that fall on, whose leadership does that fall under? Does that fall under Kelly Briggs' leadership?
It does.
Okay.
And she has made, she has done some incredible work over the past few days to, to get some systems in place. I also will add that we're working, I had a late conversation with Jamie Saunders and Aqua Porter from United Way. So they, I, they said just, you know, we were finally able to connect, they said, what do you need? I said, I need to have supports for those scholars who just don't, who can't get transportation, they just don't have it. So they are focusing on that. So that, again, goes to your question about not only those who don't have transportation, but those who are walking with the Walker Bus Program.
You all set, Vice President Elliott?
I think she's frozen. It looks like President White.
She's frozen.
Yeah.
Yep. All right, well, let's go on. I know Commissioner Clark had a question or two.
Yes, thank you, Superintendent. You, you partially answered my question with your last response to Vice President Elliott, because my, my question to you was on the three hundred and seventeen students that are not covered. And what role can the Rochester City School District legally play in connecting those parents to the community involvement plan? Because I know that there's legal ramifications also, but with the churches, United Way and others coming up with the means to get those students to, to the schools. Are we connecting those parents directly to those organizations so that they can have that as a means of transportation? And is there any liability back to the R C S D if we do that?
I'll answer the first component, and then I might have to have Steve help me with the second, the second part. So schools are being very creative, they're working within their teams, and they already have either churches or nonprofit organizations. As you know, some of our schools are attached to our centers. So they are working creatively to see how to get the transportation covered. So principals have been reporting back through the chiefs and through Kelly that transportation is beginning to, to get picked up or is, is, is able to be satisfied. So I don't have that number yet, I'm, I'm working to get that, and my hope is to be able to report that back soon. But they are working on that. And then again, working with Jamie and Aqua will continue to figure out what that looks like and who's involved with that. We did check, as far as I know specifically about the liability, so for example with the bikes, those are donated to families and to students, so there's no liability with the district there. And Steve, I'll just go out a little bit further, and you can certainly correct me. As long as the district is not saying, or your transportation is going to be supplied by the Urban League of Rochester or I B R O, as long as we don't endorse or mandate that, our liability is either very limited to, to none. That would be something that parents would be, we could certainly make them available to let them know, but it wouldn't be, as long as we don't mandate it or say, this is going to be your transportation to the end of December or the rest of the year, then there shouldn't be any liability. But Steve, you can certainly correct me if I'm, if I had a misstep at all.
No, I mean, generally, just telling people about resources in the community are not something that's going to get us, you know, link. It's better if you say, there's a host of, of possibilities, please choose amongst them, and that's, that's really the better way to go, rather than endorsing a specific one. And certainly, the district shouldn't be, you know, setting up these meetings with the community organizations, arranging for the carpooling, things like that. That is, that becomes more problematic. But simply saying, it's, it's like, you know, when we tell people that there are food pantries available, if somebody gets food poisoning from those food pantries, we're not, we're not responsible for it. It's, you're simply saying, this is a resource in the community, and, and, and we're a point of, of information, pamphlets, flyers, et cetera, you know, that's okay. So that's kind of, that's following the same logic.
Right, so basically, what we're doing for those three hundred and seventeen families is we're saying, we're not able to provide transportation at this time, but these are community resources that you can utilize if you don't have transportation for your child. Thank you.
You're muted, Van, we can't hear you.
I'm sorry about that. I see Commissioner Malloy has raised her hand. Thank you, Commissioner Clark. Commissioner Malloy?
Hi there, thank you. I just need some clarification, I may have missed this, around the three hundred and seventeen students. So how many of those students are special ed education students? How many of those students are elementary students or high school students?
I can't give you the breakdown for elementary or high school, and again, they're continuing to combing through the lists, but I can confirm that at Leadership and at Edison, and, and if not all, predominantly the students who are out of district are, have, are students with disabilities.
So that three hundred and seventeen students includes any high school students without transportation at this time?
Correct.
Thank you.
You all set, Commissioner Malloy? Commissioner Malloy, are you all set?
I'm not sure.
Yes, I am, I gave you a thumbs up, yes.
Okay, thanks. All right, let's take one more look at the list. I do want to add a question or two. Superintendent, I remember there being a list of walkers, seventeen, ten, and twenty-two, I, I recall, were the schools, these were students who the district appropriately said, hey, listen, although you're within the 1.5 miles, the neighborhood that your children attend school and could put them at risk, so we're going to give you transportation. That's by way of background for anybody who didn't know. You provided a list that indicated those schools would no longer be eligible for the transportation. I noticed in your list today, it had seventeen on there. It's still, I believe it was seventeen, but I didn't see ten and twenty-two. Are ten and twenty-two students now, will they now receive transportation?
No, these were just the additional, the, the updates that we had. So seventeen, the origin, the initial numbers include those walkers, buses, and then the additional is because the driver is now, or driver or drivers are not able to accommodate those students at that school.
So, so it is still.
Two, two separate sets of numbers.
Okay, so it's still accurate to say that students who attend seventeen, ten, and twenty-two, who live within what has been called the Crescent, one four six two one, will still not have transportation? They will have to make arrangements to walk or get to school somehow, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that was the case. All right.
Can I just include, is that school nine also a part of that?
No.
Meaning that they still have students who are walking or are ineligible for the, for bus services, for transportation?
Let me go back. Mike, do you have that at your disposal to answer? I'm just looking, let me see.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. So school number nine has not been in the walker, the Walker Bus Program for a couple of years now. So therefore, they still have some walkers that are receiving transportation, but not in that Walker Bus category.
So do they have any students? And I'm sorry, Commissioner, I just wanted to connect with what.
They certainly do have some students, I'm sorry, Vice President Elliott, they certainly do have some students. I, I'm not aware of the exact number that they have that are receiving transportation, but we certainly can pull that for you.
Okay.
Nobody, but no one from school number nine had their.
Mike, are you still there?
There you go, I'm sorry about that. Nobody from school number nine had their transportation discontinued as a result of these, this last couple of days.
All right, thank you.
That was inside a mile and a half, excuse me.
Okay.
Commissioner Powell?
So I'm, I'm going to, friend, this is a statement, and anyone from the administration can tell me if and where I am wrong in this statement. Families that are currently within a mile and a half of the school their child is enrolled in, who decide that, that that's too far to walk and, but there's a school closer to them, they, they are able to submit a voluntary transfer request and on a space available, could be, change their child's enrollment from that school, you're 1.4 or 5 miles away to a school that is a half a mile away or quarter of a mile away on a space available basis? Is that correct?
That is correct, Commissioner Powell. And we probably have gotten about five or six per week, per week, I think is what Mr. Capazuto told me, yes.
Say that again, we're, we're currently been getting?
That, I believe we have about five or six a week that have made that request that we've been able to accommodate.
Okay, so it's been a trickle so far, but perhaps as people understand the difficulties that this transportation crisis presents, will voluntarily step forward to their neighborhood school versus another school within their zone?
Should there be space, yes.
That's awesome, thank you.
Commissioner LeBron?
Couple of questions again, sorry, Leslie, I just have kind of mountains of questions, and I'm trying to write them all down myself. Well, with when will parents receive new schedules? So I did ask this a few days ago, and then we were told that bus drivers were going to do it on the dry runs. You made a statement for parents to be patient, but, but we also don't have information about when to expect a bus. And we also have lots of families who do not have jobs, who are going to give them the grace of patience either, regardless of the situation. So do you want me to go question by question, and you want to write them down, or do you want me to just ask question by question?
I'll write them down.
Seven and thirty-four, right now, we're informed that they're going to be sharing bell times, sharing transportation for the same students. And I'm just curious about how that's going to work when they're both released at 3:00 P. M. So if we can get information about how we're consolidating these buses and the impact that's going to have on kids actually getting home, if we can get some answers on that. Mike said that school number nine was not impacted, Walker Buses were not impacted, but we did hear from school number nine yesterday that some of their students were going to be impacted with transportation. The language or terminology work, Walker Buses was not used. But I just want to be sure that we're saying that school number nine had no students impacted by transportation versus Walker students, because that is two different terminologies that were being used. And so I just want to understand if any other students at school nine, I'm, I'm just writing, looking at my own notes, any other students were impacted from school number nine? And then if any other students were impacted from school number nine, are any other additional students being impacted in other schools not on that PowerPoint? Because school number nine wasn't on that PowerPoint either. And I'll stop there for now.
Mike, would you, you need to, I need you to respond to.
So Commissioner, I would certainly focus on the number nine question. So when we, when we remove students from transportation that were inside a mile and a half, the only students we specifically moved, removed from transportation were at those three schools, ten, seventeen, and twenty-two. So I'd have to go back and, and, and triple check in a sense, but I'm not aware of any student that was removed from transportation who lives inside a mile and a half from school number nine. And I, I, to, to the list that Dr. Myers-Malz, I'm not, also not aware of any other students. But I, what I will do is I will follow Ms. Jackson and make sure that we are, we are in synchronous in regards to a student that she may have a concern about.
So I just want to clarify, because that wasn't my question, Mike, my, my question specifically was non-Walker students within the 1.5 miles. Because we're using terminology here. I don't, I want to be clear. I want to understand if any students were impacted at school number nine with transportation? And then if any students on number nine were impacted, if there were students in additional schools that were impacted, not on the PowerPoint? So not the walking students within the 1.5 mile? And I just want to also just clarify that this 1.5 mile piece, because these were kind of situations that were set up before my time on the school board, and I don't want to say that we're in the preview. We're still talking about neighborhoods that have been identified as not safe to walk. And school twenty-two is specifically is a school that intersects over 104. And so when we start talking about these 1.5 mile radiuses around these schools, twenty-two specifically crosses over into, you know, there's 104 that students, I, I don't even know how students are going to walk that route, because we didn't not lay out a safe walking route for them, so.
Sure.
But again, I'm just asking specifically around non, not these walking students, the Walker students, as where it's labeled that.
So I'll, I'll kind of close with this, that in all the different work that I've been a part over the last several days, I'm not aware of any school number nine student that was scheduled for transportation that has been removed from transportation. And I've not had a phone call, nor any correspondence from Ms. Jackson about a concern about a student or a group of students that are in that, in that category. But I will certainly reach out to her this afternoon, or as soon as this meeting is concluded, to make sure that, to make sure that we're on the same page with that.
Okay, and then the other questions, do you want me to repeat those?
Yes, I, if you would, that'd be great, thank you.
So when will parents be receiving new schedules? I asked this a few days ago, and we were informed that they were going to get those new schedules with their dry runs, but to just tell parents to be patient, were seven and thirty-four are going to be an extra long time for a bus? Or, and the staffing piece of that, and have we communicated that to families? I'll end with those two for now.
Sure, I'll take the last one first. So in terms of the, the combination of schools, and we have, we use that one as the example, certainly within the window of time that we, with the dismissal times being, being the same, that we are going to have to, we're going to have to work through logistics as we go through the, the start of school. We do not anticipate that that will be an extended period, extended period of time where it would, where it would cause some, a, a real inconvenience for families. But I, but I also want to acknowledge that, you know, the, the priority was to be able to have as many students come, get as many students to school as possible. So those, those school combinations were a very effective way of limiting, or limiting the number of routes and increasing the number of students that we could provide transportation for. So I think with everything with transportation is all about logistics, and we're going to have to look at those schools that we've combined and work with those building principals and, and school chiefs to probably continue to work that, work that plan over the next, next several days. Certainly in the world of transportation, especially in the first several days, nothing is ever perfect. And, but I, we, we are confident, because of the locations of those schools, that we're going to be able to work through any one of those logistical areas in, in, in a few days after the start of school. So we will know a lot more tomorrow, once we get, once we do the drop-offs at both schools. We've done some, we've certainly done some, some dry runs there, but until you actually have the kids and get them on the buses and so forth, certainly the first couple of days as you're doing the logistics and making sure students are on the correct bus and so forth, you're a little bit more deliberate. But we will have, also have some additional support at both sites. So, so whatever school we pick up first, we'll have some additional support there for that second pickup. We, when we discussed the three tiers earlier in, in, in August, we also talked about the fact that we condensed the window of time between the tiers, because we were trying to lessen the inconvenience on families in terms of dramatic changes in start times as well. So a lot of those logistics go into this, into this planning. In regards to the second, first question, in regards to letters, so we, the students that we are discussing, that, that Walker Bus segment of students, those letters were hand-delivered by the transportation team yesterday. So all those families should have received a letter that was dropped off to them. The other transportation changes were, that were completed over the weekend, are all, were all mailed out at, at 6:00 A. M. yesterday, you say Tuesday, Tuesday, right? I lose track of my days, I apologize. We're, we're mailed out Tuesday morning, and we would be, the parents would, should be able to, our caregiver should receive them prior to the start of school. So we hope everybody received them, those letters today. We mailed them, expedited that mail for those, for those families. There are, as I discussed, as I shared earlier, there are literally thousands of changes that come in, and we try to turn those around as fast as we can, people changing addresses and so forth. But those specific groups of families, Walker Bus families were delivered, were hand-delivered, and all the other changes were packaged up and mailed out Tuesday morning.
So is it safe to assume that if, I'll give my audience myself for an example, that if I didn't receive a letter, that my child, the original letter that was sent to me is still the original bell time? That my child, the original letter that was sent to me is still the original bell time, uh, or bus time for my student.
Yes, that's, that would be safe to assume.
Thank you.
Looking at our list. I don't see any other questions. I do want to add a, a couple other quick questions. Madam Superintendent, when you referred today, yesterday you said nine drivers resigned. And then I think today it looked like three, I saw one in one area and then two in the other. But in any event, do you have a sense as to, um, where these, and you may have been reporting this in real time. Uh, where these people are resigning from, like for people, maybe, maybe people don't know this, but we have our own crew of drivers. And then of course there are a number of bus companies locally, uh, of course RGRTA is one. First Student, Monroe, Ontario. Um, where are the bulk of these resignations coming from? Are they coming within the district? Or are they coming from these private companies or a combination of both?
Um, it's my understanding and Mike and Chris are, are much more. I would say Mike is much more involved. I've, as I've been getting the updates, it's both Monroe. And First Student, um, as well as I think it's predominantly there with Summit, Ontario.
And how are we doing? Are we losing drivers as well or no?
President White, no sir, and the superintendent is correct, the primary, the, the primary loss of drivers is certainly with First Student and with most Monroe School Transportation. Our driver, uh, vacancy has remained, uh, has remained stable. Uh, we're currently at twenty-three vacancies, which we've been for, uh, for several weeks now. Uh, that is an increase from budget, from our budget time, we had thirteen vacancies during the budget season and we've increased now to twenty-three. Um, we do not anticipate any vacancies. Um, but you know, you're only as good as the, as the next day's, uh, as an opening of the next day, so we are really, uh. Uh, but that, our driver pool has been, uh, has stayed pretty solid over the years, so we're, we're confident in that. On, on the, on the First Student and Monroe side. Um, literally today I was talking to the, one of the leadership at Monroe School Transportation that probably quartered a twelve. And by ten after twelve, they had lost, uh, they had lost a driver, so. Um, it can really be that quickly and, um, so I, I think as a superintendent had shared earlier that this is. A, a very fluid situation where, you know, as there, as there are drivers that they're still trying to connect with, there's a lot of just variables in terms of personnel. That we're working with and our margins obviously are very tight. I think it's also important to point out that we are in a pandemic. And that, you know, we certainly can have, um. Drivers that come down, you know, that are, become sick and whatnot. Uh, we do have some, uh, emergency. Folks that would be able to drive in a, but we, and we've, you know, they, they could be office personnel, mechanics that, um, who have necessary licensing. Um, so we have those set aside just in case we have some sort of a situation that occurs right at the start of school, we have to get a bus to pick up a child. Um, we know that's a real possibility for tomorrow morning. So we wanted to make sure we had that in place, um, for those, for those scenarios that could, that certainly could arise. Um, and, and all three of this, of this, actually all four of the sites. Ourselves, Ontario, First Student and also Monroe have a, have a small group of people that we could send out, but only, only in an emergency. Um, so I do think that's, that provides a little bit of level buffer, but that is by no means a sustainable. Solution to the, to the driver vacancy program.
Let me ask you this as a follow-up question.
Yes, sir.
Is it safe to assume that the suburban companies that are being serviced by these. Private companies are experiencing the same kinds of shortages? Um, I, because many of these companies service the suburban, our suburban brothers and sisters as well. Are, are they having, now I realize though, they don't have the student populations that we have, they don't have the special needs population. So they may be able to manage that, plus their families have resources, quite frankly. When the buses can't make it there, but, uh, i- is it having the same impact at least proportionally on them? As it is.
Yeah, I'm sorry, President White, I would actually broaden it out. I think there's, I think certainly. Um, the primarily our contractors serve Rochester City School District, I believe that, uh. First Student does serve a couple of suburban schools. It is across the board that everyone we're talking to in, in, from, you know, our suburban superintendent colleagues across the state, whether it's a. One of the big five or not, their margins, they're right on their margins. Um, that, uh, um, so I think it's, it's not unique to. A contractor or, or any, or urban or rural, I mean, it's just, um, there are not subs. And everybody kind of has that bit of the same contingency plan of, uh, you know, a mechanic and so forth covering those, covering those areas, so. I, I, there were several articles this, in the last couple of days about Prince George's County was short two hundred and twenty drivers or something the other day. So I do think we're going to, this is not, it's not anywhere unique to us. Um, and I think there'll be more of these stories as, as schools start to open and. You know, without with these margins being so tight, that the, uh, inevitably we're going to have drivers that become ill and, um, and whatnot, so. Um, our, I think the, uh, so that part of it, I think is still of a concern to all of us. Um, in this, there in this.
Now, my business, they would call this a leading question, but here it is. So it's fair to say that, um, they are more adept. At addressing these problems because their populations are smaller, school populations are smaller. And two, they don't have the special needs students that we have, and three. If there's a failure in, uh, having a bus driver available. Their communities often have the resources to address those in family or in the neighborhood. Is that, is that like a fair way to describe why? You don't see the, you don't see visually, at least in the headlines. Suburban districts scurrying to fill these gaps like you see Rochester. Is that, is that a fair characterization or, or maybe it's not?
Certainly a very well articulated leading question, by the way. Um, I, I think, um, there are several characterizations that I may, I may not necessarily agree with. I think the primary one, or, or maybe not, are not in complete alignment, but the primary one certainly is the degree of difficulty in our transportation. With the, with the, with the, um, this, not only the students, but also the, the logistics of where they're going and the, and the alignment of times of. All the different subgroups that I had shared with you in some previous correspondence. That really increases the degree of difficulty for us. Um, which many of our suburban colleagues don't have that, um, that differentiation of, of arrival and departure times and, and locations to. To deal with, so when they have a gap, it's very simple in many cases to kind of plug something or whatnot. Um, especially if you're a smaller district, but because of the situation that we are in. Um, it ends up, uh, it just, the, it just ends up exposing themselves in different areas and sometimes it can be very unpredictable. In terms of that, so, um, so I do think you're, go ahead, sir, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I, the reason why, I just want to be very transparent and the reason why I'm asking these questions, leading though they may be. Is that I think there's a sizable portion of our population that wants to understand why Rochester. Um, and, and it seems like we're close to resolving. Uh, um, I'm sorry, someone's calling me and I'm, I've got to decline the call, sorry about that. Can you get, can you guys still hear me? Can you hear me? Can you hear me, Mike?
We can hear you, Ben.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yes, sir, I can hear you.
Um, that, that people, while we're close to resolving this crisis or at least making progress into addressing this crisis. People are still going to left, be left wondering why Rochester and not Brighton or Fairport or Riga. So I think you've answered that question, but I also think, again, as we move close to coming to some at least temporary resolution of this problem. I think people will also ask, and I, I'd like the superintendent or Mike, with your permission, Madam Superintendent. Why Rochester and not Buffalo? Why haven't we heard? And, and perhaps there are challenges in Buffalo and we just haven't heard about it, but I think it's fair. And it's important that you all address that issue too. Why have we not heard of similar challenges in Buffalo? It's because we just don't have our ear to the ground. And they are having challenges or Syracuse or Albany. Could you address that, Madam Superintendent or Mike? And maybe we're just ignorant, we don't know. Uh, what's going on in those cities?
So we have been, uh, getting updates that, um. There are similar, uh, transportation challenges in those cities. Um, I know Buffalo started today, so I'm waiting to see what happened at the end of the day. Um, and other districts have had to have the commissioner and others, um, intervene, so there, there are issues. I think if, um, if we just want to speak specifically to Buffalo. Um, the superintendent mentioned that they had some plans in place, but they had to pressure test it. So I think as you see today, tomorrow and Friday, you'll see the results of that pressure test. But I know that they were down a significant, uh, numbers of, a number of drivers. What we have to be cognizant of the fact of, uh, though I know with Buffalo. Their seventh through twelfth graders are, are all, um. Receive transportation through their equivalent of RTS, right? So whereas we had, um, yellow buses. Um, picking up some of our high schoolers, we've shifted that to secondary students. That completely goes through, um, their, you know, public transit system, so that's one difference. And again, um, while our, our charter school partners have been very supportive, we, um, we. Have that, uh, uh, responsibility, but we also have to remember, and you know, I, I was very supportive. And I remember we also transport students in the urban suburban program, so that's a, that's a additional layer. That Buffalo, Syracuse, Yonkers, um, et cetera, don't have.
Thank you. Uh, again, I just wanted the context to be clear for those who I'm sure have those questions, so thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Thank you, Madam Superintendent, for answering this question. I have one more question. I see we have a couple other questions from board members. Uh, this should be a relatively quick one that can be answered later. Um, in terms of those walkers, uh, those students who are now compelled to walk to school. Do we have recommended routes for those students? Um, have we coordinate, and you can give me the answer later today, but I think we need it as soon as possible. Have we coordinated anything with the city of Rochester, the police department? Uh, I know Commissioner Adams mentioned and wisely so, uh, the, um, crossing guards, although they're usually tend to be right around. Uh, the school, but, um, a, a, again, I think this is a critical element, particularly for those students ten, seventeen and twenty-two. That are in one four six two one. Uh, again, you don't have to give me an answer now, but I would, I would, I would think. That, uh, not only do I want a copy of the, of what I think should be a recommended route, and I don't know if there are liability concerns associated with that, I can't. Imagine that there would be, but, um, certainly, um, in any communication to the parents in those neighborhoods. Uh, I would think if, if at all possible. That we would recommend routes for those children to get to school so that. If people were volunteering and there is a movement to have people volunteer to, uh, just sort of, uh. Private citizens on their own, supporting, watching, and we've had this happen in this community before, this is nothing new. Uh, but if they're, parents might want recommended routes and I don't know if the administration's given any thought to that. And if so, if you think it's a positive idea, providing those maps to, to, at seventeen, ten and twenty-two. So that those students, we can sort of monitor, uh, as a community. If not a district, their path to school, you know, it's nice to talk about, people use that phrase all the time, safe passages, it's almost. Too politically convenient, but what does that mean? Does it mean just like a yellow sign with a, an image of a child on it? Or is there really a safe passage? A recommended passage where some adult eyes will be watching each of our children as they go from point A to C. Um, and again, Madam Superintendent, you can answer that later if you don't have an immediate answer for it.
The immediate answer, President White, would be that I know. Our principals have been working with families and they've had, some of our schools have already had family meetings. Or will be having family meetings. And so I'm sure that they are sharing resources and, and suggestions, but that's something I would have to circle back with. I'm not sure the, the detail and the specificity of which they're, of how they're doing that.
That's fine, thank you. Let's go back to our list, Vice President Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. President, that brings up another, a point that, and I'm going to. This came from Commissioner Bron. Uh, what, what's the status of crossing guards, you know, now that we're really talking about. You know, to the president's point, safe passages. Um, talk, can, can, what information do we have about crossing guards? And I know that that is not in our, under our Jewish diction, it's under the cities. But, um. What's, what's the status of crossing guards? Do we have sufficient amount? Is it the same kind of scenario with our bus drivers, any information about crossing guards? Who are going to be very important, um. If we're going to be increasing the number of walkers from, uh, from last year? Any information on crossing guards?
Thank you, Vice President Elliott, our team, uh, reached out to one of the sergeants to have that conversation, so they are meeting. Either later this week or next week to talk that through. To one, establish what currently is in place and then to talk through what might be a possibility, so. The, in the, uh, there's been initiated contact with, um. The sergeant and then they'll have meetings to discuss that as far as next steps.
Thank you, and so my next question has to do with, you know, how quickly are we able to respond? To whatever kinds of hiccups that they may be as we, um, as we start school tomorrow. Are we able to, do we have our strategy developed such that? And our process is in place that if there's some hiccup, we can respond to that quickly and, and confidently.
So I can explain what we're doing as a team, we, um, are, we will be out and about tomorrow on our first day. And we will be talking with principals, teachers and others to get a sense of what happened. Certainly, we believe that there will be many things that went well and that worked, but other things that did not. We have a scheduled debrief, this is a part of our process where we'll bring all of that information back. Because there'll be multiple individuals from central office out in schools. Uh, to, uh, obtain this information. And then we'll figure out how we need to make, you know, just quick mid-course corrections to address. I know the transportation department continually reviews. Um, what is working, what's not working as far as the routing and if something needs to be adjusted. But that, that is already on the docket and we will be doing that, uh, starting tomorrow after our first day.
All right, thank you, then just one last question with regard to, you presented about. The charter schools and that we were not picking up, um, those students, uh, around April was the cutoff in terms of. Um, uh, of getting transportation approved. Uh, why that date and has there been any pushback? From families or, and I know you said that the charter schools have been cooperative, but can you talk a little bit about? Um, what, um, pushback there may have been that we use a cutoff date of April to deny. Um, uh, transportation to those students in charter schools?
So April is the date that's listed in our policy that we agreed upon, so that is the date.
Okay.
Um, I, I'm not sure previously, but I know there prob, there might have been some. Um, wiggle room if we were able to, um, not wiggle room, but we may have said, at, we may have agreed. To, uh, to provide transportation after April, April first in the past, but we are holding fast to that policy. Um, and I'm sure there will be some pushback and, um. You all. You, we received it. We re. We received an email, um, recently from a parent that was demanding transportation and saying. I need it and it was a charter school parent, so. Um, we are holding fast to that and when our team met with the charter school representatives. At least those that were present were very agreeable to that and said, we agree that it should be April first as outlined in your policy.
Thank you.
You all set, Vice President Elliott?
I am, thank you, Mr. President.
Yep, uh, next on the list is Commissioner LeBron.
Thank you, just, um, a couple of things, I just want to add, um. That questions being asked today around what happened. That got us to this point, for me, it's not going to be satisfactory to have these conversations in this context. But I am still requesting an investigation. Um, I personally would want that investigation to come from the external auditors. Um, and I know that they frequently watch our board meetings, but I will be putting a formal request in writing in the future. Um, and that's going to be important to answer to our families and our community members how we got here. I would uplift that I fully recognize that this is, um, impactful. In terms of transportation across other districts, across other states. Um, but again, these were not new conversations, this is not a new crisis. It's just how this unfolded and so I am still, this, for me, in this moment, these questions are not going to be satisfactory enough. I also want to uplift that I was walking, um, out of, um, an area today and I did get. A, a car pulled over and it happened to be a parent of a new student coming to, um. Into the district. And told me that they also were, was a bus driver, that they ended up resigning yesterday because. Transportation for their own child was impacted. And so that they were not going to have their child, um, lose transportation at the expense of having to drive other children. And we had a very lengthy conversation about it and I didn't take this individual's contact information, I even offered to drive their child myself. But of course, this individual only knows me as a board member, not as someone that they know personally and. I offered to like, provide verification of my own information and my background check. But I just want to again reiterate that we're having these conversations about numbers. But I just want to, again, reiterate that we're having these conversations about numbers and including bus drivers as if these are not our actual community and family members, and how some of this is having a ripple impact and a circular impact back to the very people that have been transporting our families for a number of years, that they, to themselves, have families that are being impacted by this transportation crisis and this circle and cycle that we've created. So that's all.
Commissioner Powell?
Thank you. I want to react to your point, Commissioner, President White, "safe routes to walking to school." In my experience of 20-plus years, I've only, I have seen maps with, you know, directional arrows on them for parents to indicate what's the best way to get to a school. I've only seen them twice in my entire career. Once was when I first moved to a new school, neighborhood school, and the second time when we were actively working the managed choice policy. And we haven't done that since 2008. But my understanding is that those maps were created as a result of a grant, and they were either created by the city or by an agency within the city, you know, a not-for-profit within the city. Either way, you know, there aren't any new roads on the map since those were first created, so it strikes me that we should actively explore who owns those maps and make a concerted effort to get them out again to a family who live within, walking a distance of any school. I mean, we could, we only need to acquire enough to, you know, to provide any given school with enough maps to cover all of their walking children, but if we don't already have a source, I think maybe somebody in this district knows, you know, unless we've lost all that institutional knowledge, somebody in this district knows where those, you know, who owns those maps, can reproduce those maps, and if no one within the administration has that answer, I'm calling out to the public at large. If you know, if you're one of those agencies that participated in that grant, please communicate that to RCSD so that we can get those maps into the hands of families who are walking, especially if they're walking a route to school for the first time and have never had to do that before.
Thank you, Commissioner Powell. Appreciate that. Commissioner Clark?
Yes, I wanted to comment on that also. In addition to safe routes, safe places, I was talking to a good friend of mine who's a business owner. Matter of fact, he owns McDonald's of the Upper Falls, and he indicated that his business is designated a safe place for the RCSD. So one of the places that we can start is with the principals of the individual schools who have already, you know, reached out to find out what resources we currently have in place, and then expand upon that.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. I just, hold on, just checking our list. All right, I'm good. I want to thank Commissioner LeBron, Commissioner Powell, and Commissioner Clark. What you just saw is those three individuals commented, some positively, some negatively, on my comments about walkers and maps and how we came to this place. And I welcome that, you know, that, I just want to point out, that's how the system works best. People should be able to make comments, and then people should be able to respond to those board colleague comments. And so I take no offense, I'm not troubled, I'm not going to shut down somebody who says, "Commissioner White, you said X, Y, and Z," and this is my thought, because my ideas, our ideas are not better individually, they're better collectively. So I, again, I want to thank Commissioner LeBron, Commissioner Powell, and Commissioner Clark for commenting on my comments. I don't see any other comments, so we have a resolution, I think, Madam Clerk, to get before the board. So I'll just go ahead and ask for it. Is there a motion to advance for discussion? Resolution 139. I heard Commissioner Malloy make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. Is there any questions or comments now that every board member's had a chance to review that? I know our general counsel was able to distribute that to everybody, and I want to thank Commissioner Powell and the superintendent and Steve Carling for working on some changes. Superintendent, thank you for reaching out and having conversations with board members to make sure that this would be a smooth conversation today. But is there any conversation about 139? Let me look at my list. Oh, yes, Commissioner LeBron.
Yeah, so I just want to understand how this actually will help special education students if they are coming in, and multiple language students who are often both placed not based on any zone boundaries, but availabilities in schools that can provide the services to either meet the IP needs or the language needs.
Commissioner LeBron, thank you for that question. So we have certain programs at certain schools, so we can't place a student with a disability or a student, an L student, in a school if that program is not there. So we would place them in the appropriate program rather than just say it's the school that's closest. We have to abide by what programs are available and follow procedure, law, et cetera.
Okay, so just for clarification, this would be all other students except those two populations of students?
Unless, I'm just trying to think if there's any other special programs, but I think it's appropriate or safe to say correct, just those two.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner LeBron. Commissioner, Vice President Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, Madam Superintendent, can you, for the public, just talk about this resolution and what you are asking for the board to approve?
Thank you, Vice President Elliott. So what I'm asking the board commissioners to approve is that if we have students, and I've asked it to be backdated to August 1st, if we have any students enrolled in the, newly enrolled in the district, that as long as there's space, and as long as they're not a part of a specialized program, that they would be placed at a school within walking distance of their home. So this helps to alleviate any additional or future burden as far as transportation, not burden, that's not the right word to say, but to add to the fact that transportation is an issue, so that they would be placed at their home, their homeschool, if you would.
Thank you for that. I'm looking to Commissioner Powell for her input. She has a hand raise as well.
Commissioner Powell?
Actually, I raised it and lowered it, and I just raised it again. The concept of limiting the choices for family, well, I'm phrasing it wrongly here. You're asking that the students coming into the district or be placed in a school within walking distance? So my question, based on space availability, but hypothetical scenario, a family is moving into the district, there are several schools within walking distance, all of which have open seats. Will the family be afforded choices from among those schools within walking distance? In other words, if a family, a family might live between school number two and school number four, maybe MapQuest says they're closer to school number four, but they would like to go to school number two. And all other factors being equal, that is to say, there's an open seat in the classroom in both schools, will the family be given the choice which one to call their quote-unquote "homeschool"?
I would say, to the extent practicable, yes, but there could be other factors as far as classroom sizes and things of that nature, but I would imagine that we would be as flexible and agreeable to that. But there may be a circumstance where it might have to be one school over the other.
Well, in my hypothetical, I can't quite imagine what that would be, you know, an open seats, an open, unless there's, maybe there's a question of multiple children, and there's a seat available for one child but not for both. I mean, you could make the scenario more complicated, such you and your placement office might feel like you had to say no, but the point I was driving at, and I'm pleased with your answer, is that to the extent we can offer choice, even under these horrible circumstances, is a good thing, and actually is moving us closer towards a concept called "zoneless choice." So thanks for that.
I have a question. I don't know where the president is. Can you all hear me?
We can.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So, yeah, so I don't know if anybody was before me, I can't see the whole screen, but I did get a text from someone that says, "Students in the danger zone, the 1.5 busing rules should not apply." So Madam Superintendent, how do you respond to that statement?
Students in the danger zone should not apply? I'm not sure.
Yeah, students in the danger zone, the 1.5 busing rule should not apply. So meaning, like in the Crescent area, you know, where there, areas where there is a high crime rate, is what the person is saying, that they should, that the 1.5 busing rule should not apply to them.
Understood, and I understand that, again, there are concerns there, but we had to begin making some decisions. This is where our community involvement plan, where we look to see how we might have safe passage routes or other supports. I understand that that's a concern, and certainly a valid one.
Thank you.
I would only add to that, Madam Superintendent, as you all know, as a private citizen, I, along with a number of other people, are participating in a community mobilization meeting tonight at First Genesis Baptist Church. But notwithstanding what private citizens do, which is what Vice President Elliott, and I'm sure, all my colleagues would endorse, I would respectfully suggest that somewhere in central office, there has to be somebody who can begin to look at this issue in a real way, not just in a, and I'm not saying or saying, it's in a politically correct way. How do you, how do we make real this idea of safe passages? Commissioner Powell has said she's aware that there were maps at one time, there's no need to reinvent the wheel, the streets haven't changed, Cuba Place is now one directional now, I think, and so are some other streets, but pretty much, the neighborhood is the neighborhood that it was whenever these maps were made. I got to imagine there's somebody at central office who probably biting at the bit to participate in helping problem solve the solution, and a task would be given to them. Hey, listen, we need to talk to the principals, find out what they're recommending, and put this stuff on paper so that parents, make sure that every principal has a recommended map. And I can't imagine, even if we can't find the maps that were done before, that a principal out there who knows his or her neighborhood, and we're talking about, at this particular time, just the neighborhood of 14621, the Crescent, three principals, I got to imagine, if you were to call up any one of those principals, they would have the map of the major thoroughfares that they would recommend their kids make their way to. We're not talking about every street for every student, but just what would be the recommended map. And I would imagine that could be done by the weekend, and I strongly recommend that that be done, because I know you guys have been tied up doing these more important things, right? But now that the road, no pun intended, has been cleared of how bulk of our kids are going to get to school, those kids in 14621, in that Crescent, where we have more calls for service than any other part of our community, their families are entitled to at least hear the district's recommendation about how they should safely get their kids to school. Because, again, we rightly said, we're going to give them transportation because we want to make sure they're safe. We can't do that, you're saying, as a team, but we can give you recommended maps. We can tell volunteers where they need to be standing. I cannot emphasize enough, now that the bulk of your work is done and it's not finished, I know you guys have a lot of work to do, drivers will be resigning, I'm sure, please, Madam Superintendent, speak to those principals and get a map to those folks. But anyway, I think we've...
President White?
Yes, sir.
I didn't want to interrupt. We have delivered walking maps to the elementary schools. We do that on an annual basis. I will definitely follow up, though, with the three schools we've been discussing today to make sure that, because we do have new principals at at least two of those schools, so I'll make sure I have those maps, and we'll follow up directly with them later this afternoon. But they were delivered, it's a thing we do annually for the elementary schools, but for those three schools, we need a little more special attention, so I will follow up with that as soon as the meeting is done this afternoon.
We don't say this enough in this business in real time, but thank you, Madam Superintendent, thank you, Mr. Schmidt. That is appreciated. That's what you like, a real-time response to a concern that I know everyone in my colleagues has. Let me look at the list, see if there's anybody else who has any comments.
Yeah, I have my hand up in reference to the resolution that's still up and being discussed.
Yes.
So just want to understand, yep, in reference to this resolution, I also want to understand how receivership schools fall into this. I recognize, I'm going to be voting no on this resolution. I think that we actually just need to change the managed choice policy, and this board has had discussions and circles about this for a number of years, and I don't see any benefit to just even putting forth a resolution. But I am curious as to how schools under receivership fall into this? And then the date on this resolution goes back to August 1st, so I'm going to make an assumption here that we have families who entered the district or applied up to August 1st and are still not placed. Is that correct?
So as far as receivership is concerned, prior to us having issues relative to transportation, we have spoken through the fact that we have to be very mindful of placing, of placement of new entrants into receivership schools. So our chiefs are working in concert with placement to look through and to look through all of the, I don't want to say demographics, to look through and to be mindful of not, like, overly placing, for example, like students with disabilities or L students at particular receivership schools, because the demonstrable indicators are the areas that are continuing to keep schools in receivership. So they are monitoring that progress, Commissioner LeBron, or that process with placement to make sure we are very mindful and very careful of our particular placements at receivership schools. And then your second question was that are there students that have not been placed? I don't...
So I'm curious just as to why we're going back to August 1st, because those, I would assume that they could have been placed already.
No, I know, I think you're on. I know this was something that was requested of the placement team, so this gives us the ability to move them if we need to. So they have been placed, but we can move them if needed.
Move them because the family has requested to be moved, or we're making that decision on behalf of families?
No, we would be making, we would be making that decision given the current status of our, of transportation. So they haven't been, Commissioner LeBron, they haven't been in, you know, in the school, so they asked for some leeway there.
I know they haven't been in the school, but...
Uh-oh. You froze, Commissioner.
It'll be impactful, especially if I'm up here. Can you hear me?
You were frozen, so we heard you in bits and pieces.
I'm saying, we're now saying with this resolution, if this board passes this, that although the student hasn't started tomorrow, that you may be potentially moved tomorrow or Monday to get you to a different school that may be closer to your neighborhood against your choice. So I just want to be clear, because parents, this resolution doesn't authorize you to... Okay, well, thank you for that answer, but I just wanted to, when families make selections of schools, I have had very thoughtful families look at the data from their schools' choice and make those informed decisions. I don't want it to appear that families just pick a random school. They are, a lot of families, the majority of families that I've personally known in this district have made thoughtful decisions in their school selection, and this resolution is authorizing the administration to change the school based on our crisis. And I just want that on record. So I will not be supporting this today, but hopefully the rest of the commissioners will give this a second thought. And I just want that on record. So I will not be supporting this today, but hopefully the rest of the commissioners will give this a second thought as well.
Uh, we next have Commissioner Powell. I just want to remind our colleagues, as I said a few moments ago, that this democratic experience that we're all blessed to participate in is every board member, and our bylaws, by the way, and Robert's Rules of Order, give every person who's recognized by the chair the opportunity to respond and or comment in any way they choose to, consistent with our canons of ethics. So Commissioner Powell, if you want to comment on something Commissioner LeBron said, or more importantly, what the superintendent said, you are free to do that.
Thank you. So what I need the public to hear and understand, and quite frankly, a whole lot of folks within the administration may not understand this, but our managed choice policy doesn't guarantee families a choice after the lottery, after their initial enrollment in the district. The, the rules three and four primarily, um, provide board level guidance on, on what the, um, the managed choice, the lottery process looks like. Everything after the lottery is run is essentially, should be run on a space available basis. Now, if the placement office is being exceedingly generous with folks that come in after, um, after the lottery is run, um, then, um, and, and says, well, I see a vacant seat in this school and in this school and this school, all of them within your zone. What is your preference? That is certainly, um, commendable. And, but, a, a, and it's also true that the voluntary transfer process, which goes clean through till bed stay, affords the family an opportunity to request a school change. But, uh, but a voluntary transfer, they don't have a choice of, they don't have rank order choices. They identify a school they want to train to, and then, and if there isn't a seat available, they're placed on a waitlist. So if there are folks out there that think that managed choice means that all parents have all the choices in the world, that's just not true and it has never been true. So, uh, quite frankly, this resolution simply clarifies some of the limitations that have already always existed, but have never been explicitly articulated because policies by their nature are vague and give a lot of latitude to the superintendent to interpret. That's all I got to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Powell. Commissioner Malloy?
Hi, thank you. Um, I guess I just need some type of assurance by, in, in passing this, if we pass this resolution, I, I guess what assurance do we have that this is going to alleviate our transportation crisis? Because we could have more drivers than quit, right? And that would just compound things further. My fear is that this resolution doesn't go far enough in, in looking at our long-term systemic problems.
So Commissioner Malloy, we're trying to, to, to develop, um, solutions or responses to the crisis. So we, we know that this is just one of many things that we're doing to try and make sure that transportation is not, um, um, that, that we can address this situation. So we don't know it until we try it. Um, but when we spoke with, um, we spoke as a team and we talked with placement, who does have obviously experience with placing students, they said that this is something, moving forward, should it pass, that would be helpful. But, um, as you know, we, in our, um, the, in the Dr. Jallows Plan, the academic and the fiscal plan, uh, managed choice and the way that we group school, uh, group schools and how students attend them are, uh, a part of that. And so that's something, this is, we're looking short term right now. This is not a long-term solution by any means, but we have to look at, we, and we are devising, and I want to start soon, presenting some ideas of how we move forward. So in the 22, 23 school year, transportation and these issues that we've experienced certainly don't happen again, but this is a short-term solution. That's a piece of the puzzle that adds up to the different things that we're doing. So it, it is not a long-term solution, but it is some, something that we can employ that will help to address any additional, uh, potentially some additional students, um, being placed on, um, routes and having the transportation have to, to, to readjust what they do as far as placing students en route.
Thank you. So what's the game plan then if, uh, we come back and it's not enough? We still have students without buses. We pass this resolution, we're able to save on some, some of the transportation and alleviate some of that. What are our next steps going to be? What's the backup plan?
So again, the backup plan is we do have the transportation interruption plan, learning plan that I suggested. We also have that next steps of continuing to recruit drivers, to continue to, um, uh, consolidate, um, consolidate our, um, our routes and, um, as well as, um, look at, um, those who, um, re, just do a, another review of scholars who, uh, maybe could have, uh, after a conversation or reviewing our policies, might have transportation. So it's multiple things that we're doing. But if, if we think that this is going to be the golden ticket or the silver bullet, it is not. But it's one that can certainly help us move forward.
Right. And I, I guess my concern though with the backup, um, uh, I'm sorry, what is the acronym that we've come up with? The, the backup learning plan or the, no, room?
Transportation, um, interruption learning plan.
Thank you. Interrupted learning plan, which I would assume means that we have simultaneous instruction taking place in our classrooms. We know the stress that that caused our teachers. We know that it is not best practice, um, in terms of pedagogy. So my concern is that if this has to be more, like, do we have any timeline of when we would cut that off? In certain schools, would we consider, um, you know, you might have a teacher that ends up with, um, most of the class remote because of the transportation issue. What are we going to do to alleviate that within individual schools? Are we going to create separate sections for those students eventually? Or could this potentially simultaneous instruction go on for the entire year? So I'm just unconcerned that if we don't figure out the transportation piece, we're going to be putting a lot of our, um, instructors in that position. Um, and that, we know that that's not best for kids. And I just want to make sure that it's not enough just to have kids in school. It needs to be quality learning that's taking place and teaching. Um, and the vast majority of our teachers, um, we're very thrilled to get rid of that simultaneous instruction. So I don't want that to become the status quo. Thank you.
Sure. So this, let me just say a few things. This is inter, intended for a limited amount of time and as well as, uh, and because we're in an emergency and we want scholars to have access to education and to still have access to high-quality education and to have access to their educators. We know the challenges that we experienced as a result of, um, simultaneous. Um, we've had conversations with union leadership around those particular concerns, and we understand that. Should this continue to move forward, one, we are, our, uh, Division of Teaching and Learning will look at the possibility of opening up those, um, you know, remote learning sections. I think what we have to be mindful of too is that it's very, we were a district that was under remote learning longer than many other school districts, you know, maybe Buffalo was in the same as us. So I don't think there are necessarily issues with remote learning, but the, the, the time that our scholars were in remote learning. And so our goal is to get them back in and, um, up and running. But should we have a COVID outbreak? Should we have, continue to have the transportation issues? And we have higher numbers of students who need, because of the transportation and or COVID, need, um, to participate in remote, our teaching and learning team has already started looking at that to see what that might be. So that's something that we wouldn't wait until the very last minute. We'll be developing that. And we can certainly come back after we've, we've spoken with principals, we've spoken with, uh, union leadership around what that would look like. So this is intended for, because it's an emergency and it's for a limited amount of time. But if this continues to extend, then we will have to look at, at doing some things, um, differently or, or making some shifts.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Malloy. Commissioner Clark?
Yes, uh, just wanted to, uh, state briefly that in reviewing the plan, I know this is not the ideal resolution, but given the time, the effort that the superintendent and the, uh, administration has put into this, also given the fact that it's the least impact on our students where we now only have 317 students outside of the Walker area that we need to accommodate. I will be supporting this resolution because we are in an emergency. And while I understand it's not ideal, why the superintendent has stated that it's not an ideal resolution, it gets us closer to a solution today, and that's what we need to do. So, you know, given those facts, hearing the students, hearing the parents say, we do not want remote learning for our children, hearing the seniors say, I do not want remote learning. This, I feel, is the best alternative we have at this point in time. And we need to, uh, we need to move it ahead and we need to get our students back in school. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. Uh, let me just take a look to the list to see if there's any other commentary. In, in addition to adding what, uh, piggybacking or duplicating what Commissioner Clark said, um, I want to make clear that, uh, we do appreciate all the folks, um, Madam Superintendent, who work with you, um, day and night, and that's no joke, that's for real, uh, day and night to get this crisis addressed. We appreciate your humility and honesty, whereas Commissioner Clark indicated that, um, you can see that this is not perfect. Indeed, there could be nothing, no perfect solution to this problem, given the COVID, uh, how it's ravaging through our community and scaring our employees, rightly so. But, but I do want to emphasize, um, you have our thanks. And, and this is really to all those employees, I happened to peek into a conference room yesterday, and I saw a lot of, uh, weary eyes, uh, but committed souls doing their best under a very, very bad situation to make sure our children, and that's what the focus has been, not on board members, not on politics, but on children and their families, trying to get them back to school. Uh, was the situation perfect? No. But God knows what we would have done if your people had not diligently worked over the last 48 hours and then some on this challenge. So I'm looking you all, uh, directly, and your weary eyes, along with the board members who all also have weary eyes and some of us bags under them, we want to say thank you, and we really do. And, and I know our families would say the same thing if they could participate in this meeting directly. So, so please communicate that to every member of your staff and to those teachers and principals who have to deal with the consequences of these last-minute decisions and the shuffling around. You have our appreciation and thanks. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. It doesn't seem like it at times, I know. But I want you to know that every member of the Board of Education truly appreciates the work that you're going to have to do to follow up on what the administration has done. So we hope you are watching. If you're not, we hope that you are hearing, uh, somehow that you have our thanks and appreciation. Uh, let me take one last look at the list, um, and, and I don't see any others. So let's go ahead and vote. Um, Madam Clerk, are you ready to take a vote on Resolution 139?
I am.
All right, we'll do that. All those in favor of Resolution 139 indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
I heard two nays. Uh, Madam Clerk, are you, you, uh, uh, heard those votes?
Yes, the, uh, motion passes, uh, with, um, five votes, yes, and two noes.
Okay. All right. Uh, I only need to have one other motion, and you all know what that is.
So moved. Second.
I heard Vice President, I think, say so moved, and I heard your Pop, Clark say second. All those in favor of adjourning this meeting indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, good night, good day, everybody, and be safe.